Welcome to the November 11th, 2019 Plan Commission Meeting. It looks like we have a quorum, so thank you for everyone for braving the weather tonight. The first order of business is to consider the approval of the minutes from October 14th. Phil, entertain the motion. So moved. Motion by Schumacher, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Caravelo. Caravelo, anybody have any questions on the minutes? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Council representative report, anything to report out, Phil?
At the October 22nd council meeting, the Goodview condominium final plat, which was R 163 of 2019, was approved and the conceptual plan for, or preliminary plat for the metals at KPW was reviewed and discussed, as was, we discussed the, had some discussion regarding consideration of the TIF for Kettle Park West Phase Two.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions? Then we'll move on to staff report. Director Scheel.
Containing your packet is the normal monthly report of activity. If there's any questions, we can certainly answer them. It's pretty brief at this point. Hopefully, projects are wrapping up for the year, but some have been trapped in this pre-early weather.
Sure. And I would just highlight that the groundbreaking for the Hilton True Hotel is going to be tomorrow morning if anybody was available and would like to attend at 10 o'clock. We encourage you to be there if you'd like. It's probably going to be cold out there, but I hear they have a tent. It's supposed to be warm in the tent, so we'll see how that goes. Item number five is a request by Dvorak Investments, II LLC for direct annexation of 51.315 acres of land along the west side of US Highway 51, near County Highway B, from the town of Dunn to the city of Stoughton. And this was tabled on October 14th, 2019. And I think there was a couple of questions that we'll try to answer tonight. And Director Scheel, you want to start us off?
Yeah, just so the commissioners know, I'm not trying to get out of being in the front row, but our cable doesn't reach to my normal seats, so excuse me for sitting off to the side. But it does allow me to point out from the screen, some of the images on the screen here. On the top-left portion of this screen, it indicates at least where the subject property is in relationship to the comprehensive plan. Long County Highway, or Highway 51 at B going to the east. This property is more appropriately described in this graphic here. On this more detailed graphic, you can see that Highway 51 runs along the center of the page. B to the east goes off to the right-hand side, and the subject property proposed to be annexed is shown in the dark outline. As a request to the Plan Commission, Mayor Swadley and I met with the town of Dunn, a couple representatives, as well as their town chair at Minnehan. I found the conversation to be quite productive, and I think we were able to address the concerns, indicating there isn't an immediate plan for development here. And it does intend to be tilled and used as farmland until such time a development plan's put in place. Looking at the area comprehensively for stormwater and utility infrastructure will be part of the necessary aspects prior to development. And they certainly seemed comfortable with the conversation. I thought it was productive, and Mayor Swadley can interject his opinions of that conversation as well.
Yeah, we had a meeting shortly after our last Plan Commission meeting, and I think there's an understanding that there's almost a natural border heading toward McFarland, where the wetlands start. And they're really, the property there, we don't really believe would be very developable anyway. And I think the greater concern would be future annex off to the west, down toward Rutland-Dunn Road. And I don't believe that section is currently in our comprehensive plan.
Correct.
Other person, Caravelo?
Was there any further discussion or consideration of a formal boundary agreement with the township?
I would characterize the discussion as one that we didn't know, or didn't anticipate, or I don't think the conversation led us to believe as a group that that was going to be necessary. As the mayor indicated, there's a more natural, or fairly natural, boundary of undevelopable land to the west of this site and to the north of this site. So using this map as a graphic, what you can't see off the screen here is there's some environmental corridor depiction in this general area in the top left-hand quadrant of this map. And would lend itself quite well to a, kind of a natural boundary, if you will. For people to understand where we bound, we have a border that's common with Dunn right now. It's from B to Rutland-Dunn Town Line Road, this segment here. We share a boundary with them. And Rutland-Dunn Town Line Road is the, Rutland is to the south, of course, and town of Dunn is to the north.
I think that just based on the discussions, that's really the only area where we run up against each other. And I don't know how cost-effective it would be to even draft such a document. And really, didn't, I didn't really hear them and, or us express really a need to pursue that. I mean, that's certainly something that we could look at in the future, but really, that's the only connection point that we have. And I didn't really feel that there was strong desire to continue that part of the conversation at this time. Other person, Schumacher.
The concerns that they raised, I think in one of their letters about having that little bitty peninsula with that house that's still on there, was that addressed with them? Or?
We talked about that parcel. They'll still be able to serve that parcel, as it would be. And we couldn't speculate as to whether that would become a part of a future development, not knowing how the development pattern will evolve there. It's a little premature to know if that would be subject to a part of that development scenario.
Were they aware that that is a possibility, like with what DOT has a plan for that?
So the DOT plan doesn't actually show that house going away.
Okay.
Let me get back to the graphic that's a little better for this, I believe. So the parcel that we're referring to is this, there's a farmstead on this segment here. The DOT plan for the roundabout at this location would still accommodate that home-to-be at that location.
Okay. Where's the Rutland Town Road on this map?
Just to the cell, just off the page, if you will. Now, I can go back to the other graphic and show it a little better. I can zoom in if I need to as well. So on this map, Rutland-Town Line Road is right here. There's a 40-acre tract right here, and the subject property is this area. Does that define it well enough?
It's better.
Okay.
And I would just, you know, conclude that we did talk about some other common challenges and issues during our conversation. So we do shared services for EMS and fire. Generally, when we meet, we talk about those type of issues. Also, some of the shared services that we may have through Public Works or other departments, senior center, youth center, those types of things. So, but this was the purpose of the meeting, was to talk about this issue. But we generally, when we do meet with them, we cover other issues as well. And I think, you know, I feel pretty good about our relationship with the township at this point. So I thought it was pretty constructive and very positive, I thought so as well.
Yeah, I think I just want to note that on the, I was trying to find where I read this, but on the Department of Administration letter, the petition filing, I guess, for the annexation, the DOA actually notes the two communities, Stoughton and Dunn's comprehensive plans are consistent in that they both recommend creating an intergovernmental boundary agreement, preserving farmland, and promoting compact and orderly development. So that's why it was kind of like, and next sentence says, "Developing a boundary agreement could successfully resolve communities' shared land use and service issues." So, just.
I think that's probably some typical language you get from the DOA, in recognizing that the only boundary is right there, and there's really not any additional land in play. And I don't know if there's really a need for it. What's interesting about the comprehensive plans is we're required to do them every 10 years, and I don't know if anybody beyond us really looks at the plans. So we send them, I believe, to the state.
The towns get them too.
Yeah, the towns and the state. And really, there's nobody saying, oh, you both are claiming this is part of your cop plan. So there's really no mechanism in place to help us with those potential disputes. So it's like, I don't know what the purpose of having, submitting the plan to the state if they're not going to do anything with it anyway, you know, so.
But isn't that something that we should be doing?
Well, I think that was.
Instead of pushing it off on the state thing, they need to look at this, shouldn't, when we put this plan together, should we have not have talked to the town about what their comprehensive plan was, and so that we didn't have overlap? So that we, so we don't have to rely on the state to do that for us? I mean, we're kind of adults here. We should be able to do that?
I think that would be ideal. Certainly, when we go through the cop plan, they're at public meetings, and they would be more than welcome to attend. And I think our meeting was an effort to kind of do it after the fact, if you would, so.
Did we look, when this plan was put together, because I wasn't part of this one, did we look at what their comprehensive plan was, so that we wouldn't run into these problems?
Yeah, and we certainly did. And actually, we included dialogue with the town. All the towns have their comprehensive plans that go up to our current borders. So there's always the potential for disagreements or differences of plans in that transition zone. Remember, the city has ETJ, extraterritorial jurisdiction, to plan a mile and a half out from our boundaries. So this certainly falls within that mile and a half boundary area, where there is potential challenges or differences of opinion about the development pattern for that. The town did acknowledge during our conversation that the city does have a fairly high density, our land use is actually quite dense compared to some other municipalities. As far as density per acre, we have about a 5.3 units per acre overall as a city. And they're acknowledging of, or they acknowledge that the city has done a good job of keeping a tight-knit urban footprint.
So are there any questions or concerns? Otherwise, we're looking for a recommendation to the city council.
I'll make the motion to recommend the city council the annexation of the land in town of Dunn, as described.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Barman. Any more discussion? Seeing none?
Actually, yeah, I mean, I guess, I'd just like to add that I would still kind of like to see us focusing more on areas that are already in our urban service area, or, you know, really directly adjacent to it, or just easier, that already have infrastructure in them before we annex more.
I agree, this is somewhat of an island out there. You know, we're not really connected by, but by what was, I'm assuming is, you could say, yes, we are connected by the Lindre property, which also has, like, no infrastructure in it whatsoever, and probably won't for quite a number of years. It's like a big island out there. And I'm looking at the percentage of that, which is proposed for commercial versus residential. That's like, what, half, over half the size, or half, 60% of the size what KPW is now. They haven't even, they're having problems filling those open lots that they have already. We're trying to preserve our downtown, trying to focus inward on, and keep a tight pattern. This is not that. I'm having a hard time agreeing with this.
Any other questions or comments?
Despite having made the motion, I do agree with the other alders in that I think this one is definitely on the outside of where we would want to consider this. My only reasoning for wanting to support this was because it is, it's at that kind of strategic intersection for entrance into Stoughton area. And having control over that from the city's standpoint, I think, is beneficial to the city.
Yeah, I think part of the point is to try to develop this in an orderly manner, and try to do the infrastructure work all at once, instead of trying to piecemeal it together as we go along. And I think annexing this part on the west here really helps to pull that together. And, you know, at some point, I think, you know, we'll have a nice development out there. I don't know when it will occur, but certainly, having it annexed is the first of many steps, you know, to get to that point. Director Scheel mentioned our extraterritorial is only a mile and a half. I think we could actually go up to three if we chose to. You know, a mile and a half has served us well, so nobody's promoting the three, but certainly are within our rights to accept this annexation.
I agree that, you know, we do have the mile and a half, so controlling that intersection at that point in time would be easy to do with the extra mile, as you said, it's within our mile and a half already. So it's kind of a moot point. But, so be it.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, two noes, so that motion does carry. And that will take us to item number six, and that's a request by Natalie Richter for a conditional use permit to allow group daycare and nursery school uses and site plan approval to construct a new building at 1940 Jackson Street. And we have this on for a public hearing, but do we want to kind of review the plan first and then open it up?
Sure.
And we have some guests here tonight that can help walk us through it. You can either come to the mic or sit over here if you'd like, since there's three of you. You just want to pull the mic down and kind of lean into it when you're talking, and that way we'll be able to hear you well.
Would you like me to give an overview?
Sure, Rodney will give an overview, and then you can introduce yourselves, and if they have any questions, they can ask. How's that sound?
This is an existing property at 1940 Jackson Street. This map actually depicts the survey of the site as it currently exists, with the building footprint as it currently exists, the parking areas that currently exist. This just happens to show the topography on it as well. I think it was important to just give you that backdrop before we talk about the proposed facility. Their proposed facility actually is utilizing some of the building foundation, but it's my understanding most of the structure will be redone from the, from the foundation up. There is some modifications to the foundation perimeter to some extent, as well as the site plan. Site plan, again, encompasses much of the existing foundation, but there is modifications along the back and along the eastern edge. So Jackson Street's on the bottom side of the page here. You'll note that still encompasses a wraparound traffic flow pattern with angled parking being added to the front, to, I think, more optimally facilitate their drop-off for their use. And I think they anticipate the eastern parking primarily for employee, employee use. You'll note that on the site plan, they indicate a perimeter fence, or a fence in the playground area, so that would be enclosed. They've got their trash dumpster location. They've got a 15-foot setback from the pavement edge to the eastern property line, which I think is even greater than it currently exists today. And then they've, this does not, this plan doesn't currently show the landscaping, but there's a landscaping plan in your packet as well. Just trying to hit the highlights, and the applicants can probably add and fill in the blanks.
Thank you. Anything that we missed?
I'm Scott Foley from Ultimate Construction, a contractor for the daycare. We will be taking the structure down to the existing foundation, and that's the only part we're going to save. We've had to cut off roughly eight feet on the easterly side to meet the setback requirements. So the entire parking lot will be taken out. We have to change the apron cuts to make them wider, per year ordinance. Facility to keep the 60 children that they need in the facility. We're going to go out the north side of the building with an addition, and then coming out the south side towards the front to the existing front entranceway. That part of the building will stay. And then on the northeast side, or northwest side, we're going to square up the building. Structure will be made out of SIPs panels, structural insulated panels, 12-foot high. We have attached a landscaping plan, bike rack. The dumpster enclosure will be all cedar fencing. And the back property line will be a six-foot cyclone fence with plastic slats up against the north end of the property, six inches, six inches away from the property line.
It won't be an easement, so it'll be off.
Okay, sorry.
Off the property line.
Gotcha.
Natalie, you want to explain your operation?
Yep. I am Natalie Richter, the director.
And I am Brittany Roosh, I'm the board president. So basically, I feel like I'm not close enough. Basically, we are looking to move, because currently we sublease from Martin Luther, who subleases from, or who leases from the school district, but their lease expires in 2023. So they have informed us that they are not intending to renew as well. So we need a place to go, and we want to maintain a community feel and be a walkable location for our families and our students. And we like the idea of repurposing this space. We do have some more information for you about us as well. But yes, we are a parent cooperative preschool. We've been in town since the 70s, and we've been in our current location for a while, but like I said, we do need to move. We have, it is kind of dated there, and we have no place to go after this.
When you were deciding to raise the structure, or ultimately raise the structure and go, what were the considerations between renovation versus raising, and, well, not a full raise, but, you know?
The building was a, it's got some old issues. The remodeling cost is outweighing the new, with the way the structure is, the age of the structure, trying to get the classrooms to work accordingly for the age groups. We had to meet so many square feet per student. So it was just better off to take it down to the foundation, leave the foundation, and leave the slab work in, and cut the existing slab accordingly to get the plumbing where we need. There isn't a lot of plumbing that's needed, you know, that's all generally located for the bathrooms. There will be a small indoor gymnasium on the end of the building, in the westerly edge. Again, we were looking for property, couldn't find property that would suit this and the city of Stoughton for it.
What was the exterior material that was on it? You said you're going to do SIPs panels on it?
We're going to do SIPs panels with vinyl siding, stone, to match the surroundings buildings. The SIP structure for the insulation value, the quietness, the healthiness, the strength, one of, you know, we use them all the time.
So you should get an increase in your R values on it, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then you've got, as far as your site plan goes, your green space accommodates whatever the 60 kids you have potential for? Okay.
Yes, per licensing.
Okay.
Other person, Eskey.
You going to make it?
Yeah, I'm fine now, thanks.
Couple of questions. The first being, did you consider directly renting from the school district?
Honestly, we did not, because we don't need that much space.
I mean, unless. Could they prorate you into a, anyway?
No, we didn't.
But my real concern here is dropping off and picking up 60 children on Jackson Street, which is a major artery for the cities, and what that will do for traffic. Have you done any kind of traffic study?
We have not done a traffic study, but I will say that we, so we have 60 children, but they do not all come at the same time. So our morning programs, we open at seven?
6:45.
6:45. So some students begin getting dropped off at 6:45, and they have before care, before our school actually starts at eight. And then our 4K, two sections of 4K come at eight. But then our preschool students come 15 minutes later, it's staggered, and then another section comes in the afternoon. So while we have 60 students, we don't have them all at the same time. In addition, some of them are bused. About 10 kids are bused currently, and some of them also have wrap care after school, so they're not getting picked up until later, between three and six.
Okay.
Commissioner Barman?
What would be a little helpful to me is a little bit more background on the existing structure, not only its age, which we talked a little bit about, but, I mean, I'm assuming it's not historic structure, that it's more like 1960, 1970 vintage?
That building was built in the 90s.
Oh, the 90s, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I was involved in the first CBRS in Wisconsin building those. In fact, Coshagen and Son out of Cambridge built that.
Okay.
And that structure is very apartmentized.
Okay.
And with bedrooms, in the middle of it is, has what you call a pacing track.
Okay.
And in the center is all your mechanical areas.
So what was its most recent use? Because I didn't get it.
It's CBRF.
Okay.
And it's been vacant, I'd say about seven, eight years.
Several.
Windows are being busted out of it. Building's in pretty rough shape on the inside.
Okay.
Per licensing requirements, we have to have 35 square feet per child. A normal 4K classroom is 20 kids. So we had looked at renovating, but with how narrow the structure is, that would not fit the right-sized classrooms for what we needed.
Sure.
It's kind of falling apart inside. There's a, what's in the middle of it?
There's a block wall structure. And the reason why the block wall was put in, CBRS at that time could only have, I think it was 12 per side, and the way you got around that state code was to put a four-block wall up.
Okay, okay. Thanks, that helps.
Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Selser.
Thank you. I own the property right to your, to your east from there. It's a four-unit apartment building. And then I'm also a resident of Kensington Square, which I need to inform you, because they're, you know, that, those are the people involved in the back.
Correct.
So I will be abstaining from the vote altogether, but I just, the two concerns I have, which have been expressed to me by others, and also myself, and one is, I think they moved this setback for this building to be 60 feet on the right, on the east side, so they would meet the backyard setback, which they don't meet right now. Is that?
Correct, that's why we're cutting off that end of the building, and moving the parking lot. We had to move the parking lot roughly by three feet.
So will there still be a 60-foot, is that still going to be on the east side, that 60-foot setback?
We're going to have 60, 60.5 on the east side?
Yeah, I saw that.
Yes. If you see that dotted line on the plan, that is the existing foundation, that's how much of the building we're cutting off.
All right. Well, my question is directed toward a different kind of ideas. Normally, that would be the backyard setback, but... Normally, that would be the backyard setback, but that can be sort of substituted, I guess. But now the backyards, you're going to redo the slab to bring the building so it comes about the same to the existing backyard line? Or are you going to stay, go even farther?
We are adding 14 feet on the most easterly side because we have to gain that classroom size. And we're squaring up, the westerly side, we're squaring it up to the furthest point of the existing structure.
Okay, but what about the back?
I'm calling the back the north side. We are projecting out 14 feet on that one spot only.
Well, then my thought is just that you still have a 60-foot on the east side or not?
Correct, we still have 60 feet. The existing building was not 60 feet away from that property line.
And that was, but that was approved as a substitute, right? At the time, zoned or whatever? Maybe somebody else knows a better answer to that. I am trying to get at something here that I think is important. Let me, let me explain what I'm trying to get at and maybe somebody else can help us out. But that backyard setback backs up to the homes in Kensington Square.
Correct.
So what would happen if, I guess their concern is somewhat noise from children, which, you know, and daycares are allowed in certain zones. But if you're bringing that slab back further toward the back line, would that have been approved if this had been for a daycare at that time? So we were dealing with a property that had some changes made that didn't really meet code. And now it's going to be a property that has, I think the play yard is to be out in the back, right?
Correct.
And that, that row of pines that's right at the back is six feet approximately or eight feet from the beginning of those backs of those homes. So that's going to move the children's play area in the backside of the building. Would that be approved, do you think? And I'm not trying to create problems here, but would that be approved if this were a new building and they wanted to cut that back and make it closer to the, to the houses? Because that noise can be a problem and it's, that's my question.
Okay, I think Commissioner Barman, do you want to respond?
I think I'm understanding your question, but I think there may be some misunderstanding. The way I understood what was being proposed is that because there's a change of use, that everything you are putting before us meets current code.
Correct.
Okay, we're not looking for any kind of variance here. And even if there was variances in the past, this particular plan that we're looking at meets all current code for this particular location.
That is correct.
So you're saying that there is 60 feet from the back edge?
There doesn't, it's not required to have 60 on the backside.
Oh, it's not, okay.
It's 30.
30.
Okay, and so that's being met?
Correct. The easterly side, the reason why we're cutting it off is to meet your zoning requirements. That's why we're shortening the total length of the building and moving the parking lot.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
And your question about noise, again, the SIPs is a structurally and sounder building. The noise transfer won't be coming out of the inside of that building like a regular structure?
No, it would be the play yard that I think may bother people. But I, I'm not, I like the sound of kids playing, so it doesn't bother me. But I just trying to make sure we aren't shifting exceptions we made for this building over to the new building, even though it's for a different use.
Correct.
Would you like me to touch on when they're outside? Would that help?
Sure. Yes.
In the morning, we typically have two 4K classrooms running and one three-year-old classroom. Typically, they don't go outside until about 8:30 in the morning. And each class is about outside 20 minutes or so, at only 20 kids at a time. I don't feel like they're that loud, but to someone not used to that, they might be. But it's little amounts at a time, it's not going to be all day. We don't usually go outside after four o'clock. In the really cold of winter, we tend to stay inside. We will have a gym, so we can utilize that space too. We're also hoping to use Virgin Lake walking trail and walk to the park some days. So I'm hoping the noise won't be that big of an issue when they're out, small amounts of time and not early in the morning or late at night when it's dark.
In addition, we're, we run as a school, so we're not open in the months of July or August, when people tend to be outside quite a bit. And in the summertime, we only run a couple of summer camps in June and like the first week of July. So there will actually not be anyone outside in most of the summertime.
Okay, well, and just to be more positive about what I'm saying, that row of pines is very thick. And also, the yard from those pines on into Kensington Square is very short. It's kind of like there's really no backyard there. So I don't see a problem there. I just wanted to find out, make sure we're getting under the requirements for a daycare versus the requirements for the previous building. Okay?
Okay, thank you. We do have a need to have a public hearing, so if there is no more questions, we'll go into that and see if anyone's here to speak. So we'll close the regular hearing and then we'll reopen for a public hearing. And is anyone here to speak for a public hearing on this issue? And we're seeing none, so we'll close the public hearing and reopen for the regular business. And we're looking for a recommendation to the council. Is anybody prepared to do that or do you have additional questions?
I've got one last question.
Go ahead.
Just for curiosity's sake, what is your licensing requirement on your green space per kid? Do you know that number offhand? I mean, I can look it up just as well.
I believe it's 75 square feet per child. The amount we have now is what we have over at Pumpkin Patch at Yehara. It's just a little bit longer. And that actually could probably have about 40 kids out there at a time, but we usually only have 20.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or? Otherwise, we're looking for a recommendation for the city council.
I'd move to approve the site plan to construct a new building at 1940 Jackson Street.
I'll second.
Okay, second by Caravelo. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Did that include the site plan review as well?
That was, that was site plan. Conditional use.
Right.
Was I in the wrong order?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I was just looking at the order on here.
Yeah, I apologize.
So we'd be looking for a motion for the, for the conditional use?
I'll make the motion for the conditional use permit at 1940 Jackson Street.
I'll second.
Second, any questions? What is your timeline?
So your village board, your meeting is on the 26th.
Yeah.
Closed on the property on the 27th.
Oh, okay.
Submit to the state.
So you're looking at starting something in the spring?
No, this winter.
This winter? Winter is here.
Part of, part of the offer was is they needed to close us as soon as the meeting was over on the 26th of November.
Yeah.
Otherwise, the deal is null and void and it's off the table.
Okay.
And ideally, we'd like to be running next school year.
Okay, and you don't have to pour cement, so that's a good thing.
Yeah.
So you're going to start framing it out as soon as you close on it then?
Well, the semis, yes. The semi, this comes in as a prefab structure. So the panels are all.
Oh, cool.
If anybody was going down Highway 138 and 14 at Wisconsin Best, we built that project last winter, same type of product.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Selser?
Thank you. Just one, aren't you pouring a slab over on the existing?
After the structure is up.
Okay, very tricky, never heard of that before. Good.
I'm just curious.
For the structure? How are you going, how are you going to build a structure without footings?
Footings will get poured, it's got a 390 frost wall. We'll put the structure up, we'll do all of our plumbing, roof will be on, and then all the slabs are poured and colored and then coated with a sealer. Again, can't put carpet in a daycare facility, so we're doing a colored concrete.
I'm just curious about when, does anybody know when the last time the existing structure was occupied? Like how long it's been dormant, I guess?
Too long.
Been years.
A lot of years, okay.
Yeah, it's been a while.
It's been about three years. I mean, I've seen it every day and when it closed and everything, but it's somewhere in that two to three-year range. And there've been many attempts to sell it, but it wasn't suited to different things. So that's about what we've got for years that I know of.
Okay, thanks. All right, so we have to take a vote on the conditional use permit? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that carries.
One abstention if you.
Okay, thank you. You abstain on both of them then, on both the motions?
Yes, because.
Yeah.
Because I'm on another side of them, so, on the other side, so.
All right.
Not, I'm to the east, so I really shouldn't be voting.
We know where you live.
Okay.
We're good, all right, we'll note it.
Have you guys seen an increase in your demand for, your business demand with the school and not having the wraparound care programs or?
Yes, yep, we've been questioned about that, the possibility of that too, yep.
Excellent. And then item number seven is for the CSM approval.
Summary is, it's really just consolidating the two parcels into one parcel, one lot.
Okay, any questions about that? All right, so we're looking for a recommendation on that one as well.
I will recommend the certified survey map to combine the parcels at 1940 Jackson Street.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Caravelo. Any discussion on that one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None and one abstention on that one as well, all right. You're good to go, thanks for coming out.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, you'll see you on the 26th?
Yes, you will.
Okay. Item number eight is a request by Forward Development Group for approval of a preliminary plat for the Meadows at Kettle Park West. And how would we like to begin this conversation?
Maybe I can just give you a quick overview. The preliminary plating process offers an opportunity for public input. We've had introductions to the plan commission before on this topic, but this is certainly an opportunity for the public to weigh in on the preliminary plat for Kettle Park West, or the Meadows at Kettle Park West. Shown on your screen is the area that's contained for the preliminary plat that's proposed. Essentially, it's the extension of Jackson Street and the internal area, if you will, of the Kettle Park West development area. The area on the northern segment, you'll recall, was part of the previously known as the North Plat. That's now the Meadows or, I'm sorry, Meadows addition at Kettle Park West. And that is in the final plating process right now. The internal area here is the preliminary plat that's before you. It does include the small lot, single-family detached with the alley-loaded blocks, block one, two, and six and seven. So some on either side of Oak Opening Drive. One of the other graphics that was, was available is one that shows the private alley or rear-loaded alley scenarios. This is a concept. This would be a private driveway off of Oak Opening Drive would be public cul-de-sac on the north side in this particular scenario with private drive, uh, private alleys serving these rear-loaded facilities. Each of these would have the potential to have a garage access off of the alley. No direct access onto the public street for driveways. So everything would be off the alleys in the rear-loaded area. So this is an opportunity to take public input on, on the preliminary plat. But you'll recall, we also went through the conference of plan amendment process, garnering public input is part of the process. That, that amendment in 2019 was focused, a great deal on this, this preliminary plat area.
I would add that the developers sent out some examples of, of these small alley lots in the packet as requested by the plan commission. So you have some examples that you can look at. Are there any questions before we go into the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the regular hearing and then we'll reopen for the public hearing. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak on, on this topic? Pretty quiet out there tonight. So we'll close the public hearing and reopen for our regular business. And we have the request, are there any questions before?
There isn't an action item tonight.
Okay.
This was a public, public process to hear any testimony or input from the public. The plan commission will see this in their December agenda for a recommendation to council.
And the developers are here if you have any questions for them. Commissioner Barman?
No question, just a comment that I like the pictures that were provided from the different neighborhoods and some of the dimensions, so I appreciate that background information. And I'll just also comment that looking at the two examples of the back alleys or the alley access to the properties, I think the one from Bull, Buller Lane, I got that pronounced correctly. I think that we had talked about how that's probably shorter than what you guys have in mind because we're thinking that it might be good to have a car be able to park in front of the garage. And then the one in front of Day Lily, to me, seems almost too much. So just expressing my, like, vision for what you guys have presented to us, my guess is you're aiming for somewhere in between those two.
And as we've thought through how traffic would circulate in that alley.
Yes.
I agree with you that, you think of the old alleys, if you've driven through parts of Milwaukee, you know, and the garage door is right there in the alley. That's just nuts. You can't back your car out without taking, you know, some risk. Having it too far away is just the opposite problem, it just seems weird.
Yes, it doesn't look like an alley anymore.
Yeah, so what we've designed is an alley system and the setbacks of the garages, it places the garage door 22 feet back from the curb. Which, you know, that's, that's ample space for a car to pull out and not get clipped by the garbage truck or whatever else is going on. So that's, that works perfectly well with the design.
Any other questions or comments before we send these guys out in the cold?
With the additional snow, for sure, you'll be, you'll get a good idea about what snow removal would look like in these places too.
And we've designed it so that there's, there's actually a, the dry utility corridors on the, where the wider setback, that's for the electric and gas cable, whatever else goes in there. And then there's a four-foot setback on the other side to the property. Now, there's still sufficient space between that line and where the garage is, so it's, they have plenty of room there.
Just for comparison, as far as the photographs that you supplied are concerned, and you said the setback would be 22 feet, like in the illustration of Buller Lane, any idea what that dimension is? I'm just trying to look for a comparison of these two, you know?
My recollection in the, in the Buller Lane illustration is that red house.
Yes.
That garage was like six feet or seven feet from the back.
I was going to guess eight.
Yeah, somewhere in there. That's too short, and if you've driven, if you drive down that, you'll see that there's various ones, different house styles had different setbacks on them. So if you go like two, two doors further down, the garage is literally 18 feet back. So that varied, and that, that was just a particular design that they put into this area. I think six or eight feet is too short. It's probably doable for an alley, but it just, it feels too small, actually.
And on your proposal, it's all uniform distance for?
Right, and the way it lays out, it's, it's basically 12 feet from the property line on one side. Now you add the 10 feet for the utility corridor, so the door is 22 feet back. And then it's, see, the garage door. And then it's, see, the garage door faces will be the same, same size, same distance back from the curb on either side of the street. That's the way it works out. It just happens that it's a little bit more setback on one lot, type of lot than the other type.
So, you have to make sure that they're well differentiated somehow so that people aren't pulling into their neighbor's garage?
I would hope that they've figured that out. They'll do it once and then they'll figure it out.
Just a question. So, they, they will all be 22 feet approximately, or are you saying some will and some won't?
They'll, they'll all be, at least the design standard, that the, the minimum that will be back from the, the alley curb is 22 feet. Builder or the homeowner may have a different house design that, that may extend that farther. But the minimum, they'll be, all be 22 feet back from the alley edge.
Where do you see the mail, mail delivery on these?
The original idea, and that's something that's under discussion, we have to open those discussions with the postmaster. The original design was to put them in, in the interior part there, like, next to that visitor parking lot. I suspect that the post office will argue that it should be on a public street, which puts it out on the intersection, which is what, what you see in a lot of other places.
At Hawks Ridge, they have this set up in their post, theirs are in the, in the back next to the driveways.
Right, but we have to go to group mailboxes. The post office doesn't permit individual mailboxes anymore. They'll have a group setting. From a design standpoint, either one works. I think from the post office's viewpoint, they want it on a public street. So, that's the discussion that'll have to take place. I think in the, the Bower, Brow, Bowler Lane area, you'll see the postal boxes that are in a group setting, they'd be at the intersection of the alley and the public street on the north side if you've driven down that street.
So, it's a, that's a US Postal Service mandated change?
Nordic Ridge utilizes the group, the group mailboxes are in place at Nordic Ridge.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I wanted to remind the commissioners, in case you haven't heard, we have three listening sessions set up with the developers on this project. And the first one is this Friday from 2:00 to 3:30 at the Venable Clubhouse, which is over by the Skollin home. And then we have a meeting on Wednesday, the 20th, and that'll be at the fire station from 6:00 to 8:30. And then the third one will be on Saturday, the 23rd, at the fire station from 9:30 to 11:30 in the morning. So, if, if any of you are interested, certainly be welcome to attend. Might even ask you a few questions on, on what you think of the, the development and the TIF request that goes with it. So, feel free to attend. We'd love to have you, or anyone out there that's listening. Certainly welcome any input you can provide as we move forward on making the decision. Anything else on this one? Otherwise, we'll keep moving. Thank you, guys. Item number nine is a request by Exclusively Roses Inc. for site plan approval to construct a new building at 421 Glacier Marine Drive. And you wanna walk us through this one, Rodney? And we have folks here from Exclusively Roses. You can come up here and sit down if you want. That way, if we have any questions or, we'll walk through this and then you can kinda introduce yourself and, and kinda walk us through some of your examples that you put in here in the packet. Thanks for being here.
So, if you'd like just a, a quick, quick overview. This particular site is, will be the first, if you will, of the new Glacier Marine Drive area off of the Business Park North Expansion area, on the eastern end at least. Progress Lane on this map is on the right-hand side. Align Energy is, is just off the page to the right, if, if you're familiar with the back area of the Business Park. Glacier Marine Drive is the new street being constructed currently from Progress Lane all the way to Williams Drive. The city is entertaining and evaluating an option to purchase right now for this, this three and a half acre site for Exclusively Roses to relocate to this location. So, that, that's running concurrently with this. They'll have construction anticipated to start even prior to the Glacier Marine being completed, but have access off of Progress Lane to facilitate early stages of construction along with their anticipated timeline. I'll let the, the teams talk about the project more in detail.
And maybe you wanna just start out with introductions and then tell, tell us a little bit about what you do and, and kinda what your plan is here.
So, I'll start. My name's Brad Anderson. I'm Vice President of Exclusively Roses. So, I'm not sure who's familiar with the company. We've been here a few times over the last many years. We started out in the Business Park in 2004. We're a wholesale floral distributor. And we supply actually mainly to the Chicago area, southern Wisconsin, our big holidays, Mother's Day, Valentine's Day. We've found that we're becoming increasingly cramped and we've found, we've found this issue over the, on several different occasions over the last few years, which is why we've expanded. Now, we have no room to expand, so we're looking to build a new facility, 28,000 square feet up on Glacier Marine, Glacier, Glacier Marine Drive.
Can I give an overview of the...
Yeah, I'm Jeff Davis from Davis Steel Buildings, and we've been working with Exclusively Roses to design a project for the past several months. And the project basically entails a warehouse distribution facility similar to the other projects in the Business Park. It's a metal building. What makes this one a little bit different is we're going to be using insulated wall panels rather than the traditional metal building panels. Due to the new energy codes that were passed last year for metal buildings, the, the stricter codes for the walls require either a double insulation system of traditional bad insulation or to go to an insulated panel. And I think you're gonna see more and more metal buildings go to an insulated panel. What the nice things about it is that it's very erector friendly. The steel erectors really like it. And there's no exposed fasteners, you don't see any screws. There's no ribs, except for very small ones. So, it's gonna look a little bit different. So, they're flat panels. So, a lot of people consider it to be an architectural upgrade as well. In the past, they were too expensive to, to use. And as they've gotten more popular and more required by the energy code, they brought the price down. And now, you're probably gonna start seeing a lot more of these panels. We have quite a bit of glass to bring in natural light. And then we added a masonry wainscot along the front of the building. And the, that wraps around the office section. That's going to be a new kind of stone. You might see in your packet, we did this last year on a municipal building in McFarland. It's a little bit different than the traditional split block. I think it looks a little bit nicer. We've got an example of that too, if you wanna see that, so. Is that enough information?
Any questions, or you want them to keep going? Commissioner Barman?
Now, might be time to ask. I, in the materials you provided, I saw a range of color choices. But I guess I missed where you, where it was proposed, what actual colors you guys were gonna be using on this project. Unless it happened to be this picture here, this is gonna be real similar to what you guys...
Similar, yeah. So, the color selections were on the elevations and they're hard to see, they're that really small print. But this was going to be the color, it's called pearl gray, which is kinda a real neutral color. A lot of the other buildings in the Business Park are kinda that gray color. And then for the masonry, the owners picked out kind of a darker color to contrast that. It's called devotion. And here's a, here's a small sample of it. It's kind of a charcoal, it's got some brown and gray in it. And this is actually made by County Materials. They're starting to manufacture this, and I think it's gonna be really popular. It's gonna probably replace the traditional split block that we've seen used over and over in Business Parks. But that picture that you have there is from, that's from, the first time we used it was in McFarland last year. And that was going to be split block, and we changed to this, and we think it turned out really nice. Gives a little, more of a stone look, I think, so, so that's what we plan to use.
So, these are real close to the colors that we're talking?
Yeah, yep, yep. So, yeah, this is the devotion. They're on the paper there. This looks a little bit different than what it looks like on paper. That's why we brought the sample.
Thank you.
So, yep.
How does this building fit in your, in your future plans? You've obviously expanded a few times in there, so how does this fit into what your, what your future plans will be for the business?
So, in, in going over the site plan, we are, we did allow ourselves a little bit of room to be able to expand out. So, the building, the way it is built out in the plan, does allow for us to expand out. It was another, how many square feet did we have when we had spoken with...
I think another five, 6,000 square feet, something in that range, yeah, yes.
So, we do, we do expect to continue growing. There's room in the current building for further expansion. So, there, we do have quite a bit of room for, for growth.
Okay. Your, your cold, your giant cold room that you're building in there, is that just a cold storage room? Or do you actually have to work cold too?
That, that'll just be storage, yeah.
I'm jealous of it, by the way. I work in cold rooms, so if I had 80 foot by 80 foot, that'd be awesome. How about, so I was looking at your, your employee, how many employees you intend to, to add into it as well? Are those, I know you said it's averaging around 30, as much as 60, I'm sure, seasonally. What, what kinda ratio of that would be, of like the 30 on the average, would be like full-time, part-time, LTE?
So, right now, mostly everybody is part-time. Katie and I are both full-time. Some of our drivers are full-time. But that is, they're, they're not actually in the, the building themselves. So, that's something that wouldn't necessarily be adding on to parking spaces needed there.
Okay, yeah, that's, let's go on that.
The, over the years, when we do expand, we'll probably be adding some more full-time people on. We have another company that will be rolling out sometime next year that'll be operating under Exclusively Roses. But as far as the large amounts of people needed for labor, that's probably not going to be a whole lot different.
Like you said, like February to May or so is about your, your largest time for...
Yep, so, the, the two weeks leading up to Valentine's Day and the two weeks leading up to Mother's Day. If you've ever been in the Business Park at that time, we have a lot of people.
Do you run multiple shifts then, or...
Yep, yeah, we run from 7:00 in the morning until 9:00 at night.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
We've also, this last year, we changed incentives a little bit to get more people working at night, so a higher pay rate, because that helped people wanna show up for night when that was a problem in the past. So, that was something new we implemented this last year, and it helped a lot. So, it wasn't as crazy during the day because people said, "All right, I'll come in later for the extra," whatever it is per dollar.
Okay.
As far as the site plan, Rodney, there's, I mean, you obviously have the building, but there's also other improvements that need to be done to make the site ready.
Yeah, as part of our project, as part of the city project, we're installing new water and sewer laterals from the new, new street into the property line here. They're coordinating with the utilities about getting electric utilities to service the facility. They're installing their stormwater management onsite adjacent to the large regional facility to meet their onsite requirements there. And you can see that they've got their loading stalls off to the backside of this facility. And employee parking on the perimeter and along the building is shown on the plan.
And then I would, I would add, they've, they've had some meetings with Stone Utilities. Hopefully, they'll be able to take advantage of some incentives for energy efficiencies as they're designing the buildings. I think you've had at least one meeting, perhaps, maybe more.
Yeah, we've already updated some of the equipment going in because of just their recommendations. So, it's been really helpful, and it doesn't even necessarily look like it's gonna cost us more. But it forced our refrigeration company to look at a more efficient way, so it was a win-win so far.
Excellent.
Rodney, that, the, the lot that's to the south of where they're proposing, is that, was that one occupied or is that one vacant?
So, this picture doesn't do it justice completely. There's a large regional stormwater facility here, city-owned. If you went out there, there's a lot of work still going on right now. But this, there's a big hole in the ground. This is, this is their essentially now clay-lined facility for regional stormwater management. Again, that reduced their onsite requirements, but there still is some onsite stormwater management requirements as well.
You might recall, a couple meetings ago at council, we had a proposal to remove some topsoil. This is where it came from.
From that big hole.
Commissioner Barman?
In the, the staff review of this proposal, there was mention of the planning commission needing to look at the 80-foot wide Western Drive. But when I look at the plan, I don't see an 80-foot wide drive. There's some a little confused at that note. It's note 11 within our materials. It says the Western Access Drive opening, which is approximately 80 foot wide at the curb, even though the maximum width for this site is 30 foot. When I look at the plan, it says 27 across there. So, I'm a little confused where the 80 foot...
Well, 27 might be at the throat width here. But, and it might not be correctly identified as 80, but you can see the, at the flare, at the opening.
So, it's us approving that, that wider flare than what is typical?
And I think they can speak to the truck maneuvering, respect of the reasons for it is related to large truck traffic in and out of this facility.
Yeah, I believe too that the, the site plan was updated based on that comment. The radiuses were changed to meet the code, 'cause I think they had to be brought in a little bit.
Okay.
I think...
Might have changed after the, after the letter, then, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Oliver, is there my asking?
I'm looking at your, your planting list, and I would suggest that you change your Redmond Lindens to something else.
I didn't catch that. What was the plan?
Your, your plant list for landscaping, you have Redmond Lindens. I would suggest something else, just because of the fact that they're taking one heck of a beating from Japanese beetles. When you look at the trees in the summertime, if you look at all the Lindens, the tops of them are all brown. From, they're just, it's one of their favorite, so maybe something that mortality rate, they may not survive for very long.
Okay. Do you have any suggestions for, just ask the land... Okay.
Just so you know, that one is one that will give you problems.
Thank you.
Sound like you had personal experience with that.
No, actually, I haven't.
I do have a Linden, and it's a problem.
Same would go with your, your proposed crab apple tree too, with that, the apple scab that's on, on those. They just, you'll see, just drive around town, you'll see how many of them are affected.
The crab apples too? Okay.
Just get an updated one?
Yeah.
One that's more scab-resistant?
Yeah, exactly.
Just a different, just a different variety?
Okay, thank you.
Different variety of crab apple?
Yeah.
You'd suggest?
Some of the new ones are, are actually very good.
I think they're crossed with, there's an Oriental version of them, I think, that's resistant to them.
I don't remember, but they're... Otherwise, a lot of them, a lot of them are, the older versions are pretty much denuded by July.
See, here's the kinda detail that we go into with all of these things, trees.
Okay, any other questions or comments? So, I think the request is for site plan approval. Are you guys prepared to do that, or...
Site and building plan, yeah.
Site and building plan, it's all in one?
I'd move to approve the site and building plan.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Robinson. Any more discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. And you guys are on for tomorrow night at City Council then, right?
Finance committee for the offer, offer to purchase.
Yeah, so, we're gonna be... Yeah, so we're going to be considering the offer at finance tomorrow night. And I don't know if we'll make a final decision or not, but that's going to be at least the beginning of that conversation. Those meetings are held here at six. You're welcome to attend. Do we have a possible for closed session on that one? So we may have to go in the closed session and deliberate, but certainly if, if you're free and you want to attend, you can. Other person, Schumacher, is the chair of the finance committee.
Do you know if Blake and Blake plants on being there?
Uh, yes. Blake will be there, our city attorney will be there as well.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys. Thanks.
Thanks.
All right. Item number ten is a request by Chris Overston to consider changing the zoning code to allow temporary shelters in the planned business district, and specifically at 556 East Main Street. And I don't know too much about this one.
The ordinance currently does not allow for these in, in the city, essentially. The request, we've identified that there's one on the site, and they're working to resolve whether, whether they would be allowed to be continued, or change the ordinance, I mean, in order to allow them in certain districts. And we're here to gauge kind of the, the plan commission's interest in doing so. If so, we'd have to establish a public hearing in appropriate language to make such a change.
Okay. Hey, Mr. Overston?
Yes.
Okay. Anything you wanted to add to that, or?
I understand how the, the ordinance reads and the code reads in a residential setting, and how a residence would use such a structure. But in the business sector, I, and the reason why we wanted to use it is more so for equipment and trailers and scaffolding, to keep them out of the weather. And how it reads now is there's a language in there about snow load concern, while it's been snowing, and there is no snow on the structure. So again, I understand how it looks if it was a widespread city allowance. But we're looking just to be able to get some use on a commercial space. And they don't look exactly like this, but there's other places around that have like more of a hoop house type, like cement block base with a, a metal structure with a top like this, much, much bigger, maybe used a lot in, for salt applications, salt storage. And this is onsite, but the site doesn't quite look like this any, for viewability. The fence has a flats on it now, and it's way more dressed up than it is, than the pictures show. So I don't think it necessarily stands out a whole lot. Again, just trying to get some use out of it and, and change it just for a business purpose.
Any questions from any of the commissioners or thoughts? So right now, we don't, we don't allow this anywhere, Rodney? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
And we're looking to potentially change the zoning to allow it in, in planned business district. So what would that, obviously it includes this location, but what else would it perhaps include?
Well, planned business district is a lot of your, your Highway fifty-one corridor, not the downtown district, but McDonald's, the, the Walgreens, that corridor out and around, a lot of that's planned business.
Okay, so all the way up toward pick and save and?
Sure.
Okay.
So it, it doesn't, it doesn't, it does encompass a lot of real estate then? I mean, if you change the whole code, then it would allow for these kinds of structures throughout that whole corridor?
If it's, if the language is to allow them on planned business, yes. Wherever planned business is. And we can have a graphic with the next commission packing.
Go ahead.
Question about, I, I know, I've seen structures that don't have the sides all the way down, but like, for example, in the, I think it's a Dollar General parking lot, when they have their seasonal landscaping, and, and don't they use a structure similar to this, that they pop up for a short time, where they have almost like a temporary greenhouse?
They get a temporary use permit?
So they're applying just for that period?
That period of time.
Okay.
For a short period of time.
Because that's the same zoning class as we're talking about.
Yeah, yes. And you're looking for a year-round? Or are you looking for something temporary?
Year-round.
Year-round, okay. Other man might ask you?
Yep. My, my knee-jerk reaction to this is to, to not allow it. This is a commercial, commercial area. Commercial areas should not look like they're, you know, with the exception of the Copkey's greenhouses, which is a seasonal, annual seasonal endeavor, but in permanent residence, in its commercial, they need to be a structure. And that's just my own personal viewpoint on this, as far as how, I don't want to see a race to the bottom in, in seeing a lot of temporary structures being put up in, in the commercial areas.
Anybody else have any thoughts, or?
I'll just suggest as staff, if, if there's interest in moving forward, we want some guidance on what, what districts, what restrictions you might want to see in some draft language that would be presented and, and opened up to a public hearing. So that's, that's what we'd need to have, is some, some guidance if there's interest.
I also think that it depends on the, the nature of the business. I don't see anybody in the corridor all the way up fifty-one going to put these structures up. And we use it for, the space for construction. And then the only people that would do it is just for those temporary pop-ups. So.
The challenge is, though, if we change the code, then they could do it.
I to- I totally understand.
That's, that's the issue, is we open a big can of worms that,
Sure.
while you might say, well, they probably won't.
Right.
But if we change that whole zoning class to allow it, then they could.
I understand.
We could have them every single parcel all the way up and down how, on the corridor.
Sure.
And I don't think you can just make this a conditional structure that would then have to come before the plan commission each time someone wants it. I mean, I don't think the code is typically written that way, is it?
Um, I think you recall, or some commissioners recall even, that the whole discussion about conditional use, applicability of them, and trying to, over time, get rid of conditional use processes.
Because of the way the states.
Yeah, because of the state standards, and try to have things either permitted or not permitted.
I, I would, I guess I would say I tend to agree that this makes me uncomfortable, just because of the fact that even while I expect that it might not be prevalent, I, I don't want it to be something that's easily up and down the corridor. And I, I guess maybe it would help me to know, this particular parcel, I, I don't recognize it from these photos, so.
It's old stone lumber.
Okay. And so I guess one of the things that's also an option for you would be to look at changing the zoning class of this particular parcel, because it looks a little bit different than a lot of the other parcels that are up and down the corridor. So maybe a different zoning class for this particular parcel will then allow, but I, but I don't know. I don't know enough about the parcel to, to say.
Yeah, I don't think it matters, because it's, the way it reads is everything.
Not a lot anyway.
Well, if we were to move forward on it, I'd want to see some restrictions on size. I'd want to see some restrictions on quantity on one side. And I'm not prepared to answer any of that as far as size and quantity, but I wouldn't want to see anything that's large put up. And again, more of an industrial site instead of a, just free range.
So right now, the purpose is you just run out of room in your buildings? Is that the idea, or?
The, the back area is, has been, is used for panel construction now.
Oh.
With eighty-four lumber. And then the front space is used for a construction company. But the actual structure is, end up going to move in the front there, but it's basically just to house some scaffolding and a trailer. So it's to keep it out of the weather. So instead of having a, try to figure out a permanent space for that use, it was just easy to have a temporary structure that could be used there. And as the site grows and develops, you know, it just wasn't something that they wanted to put a, a permanent space for, to allocate.
So this equipment here, this isn't actually your equipment, it's a tenant's, or?
Correct.
Okay. So you're making the request as, as the landlord on behalf of your tenant?
Yes.
Okay. And the alternative would be under the current ordinance, you'd have to put up a shed or something? Is that?
Yeah.
And it's just not cost-effective? Is that the issue?
Well, it's, it comes down to just it being permanent or not. So we want to be able to have flexibility if the space has to use a temporary enclosure. And then, yeah, ended up tucking it in that corner, and you can see it here, but the, there now is that fence that's there, but there's slats on it. So coming from the ground, looking at it, I mean, you can see something behind it, but it's not extremely visible.
Because I keep hearing the language of temporary and temporary, it seems like the logical way to run it would be to go with a temporary use permit per the, the greenhouse method, and then if you find that you do need to have a permanent structure, then to look at what you would have, or what you would, what would be the best solution as a permanent structure then thereafter.
Again, I'd be, I'm, I'm fine with it, just to be able to use it. It just comes into like how long that, that is, how long you can have that temporary stamp on there, and, and go from there for sure. Yeah, definitely.
And I, I don't know if we have.
It's not defined.
It's not defined?
Yeah.
Well, it is temporary, you know, a six-month application, and two months no, and six months aga- and I don't know. How do you, the other one, I think it talks about seasonal use, and it, I think it even talks about food products, food and gardening products.
Yeah, to me, you'd have to just define continuous, you know, if it's over so many months or weeks or whatever, then it goes from temporary to continuous. And I, I don't know what that number would be. I mean, for the other facilities in the summer, it's pretty defined because of the, the flower season, for example, is a pretty easy one to follow. And I'm trying to think of, you mentioned Dollar General, I don't know how long theirs is, is up for, but I mean, I guess we could research that a little bit, if, if you want us to. I'm not sensing a strong desire for this to be kind of a permanent situation, though.
And, and again, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that aspect of it. It was more so a conversation, how do I end up being able to use it? And, and this was just what's come up. I mean, if we could have a, a temporary tag on it for six months at a time, or, or so, to, you know, get through winter season and then revisit it, and however, however it looks, I'm open to any suggestion.
So you think that's something we can do and bring something back here?
We certainly can. You know, this is not uncommon. We find these and have to deal with non, non-compliance issues like this elsewhere too. So if you want us to change, or propose change language for the planned business district, we can do that. If, if the commission wants us to do that, we'll, we'll put something together.
What I'm hearing that is?
I'm concerned about repetitive temporary application.
I do not want to see a change to the, I, I personally, as commissioner, do not want to see a change to the business district to allow these structures in it.
Okay. So I, I heard one, Noel. Did I hear others?
Same, same.
Yeah, I agree with Tom.
But I think we could, we could look at instead those conditional, or the, the temporary permit for these structures, the short-term.
What does temporary mean to you?
Well, that's what we have to define. So I'd rather look at that and have a discussion about what temporary means, and what the length is, and how it can be renewed, rather than looking to change code on the, the planned business district.
Okay. We could certainly do some research and see if there's other ordinances or policies out there that define what that is, and see if you feel that's appropriate for us or not. If you'd like us to do that, we can bring that back at the next meeting.
Yeah, because if it's, if it's temporary for six months, renewable for another six months, then it's permanent.
Right.
Or DLO, if they're completely screened, have a certain size. I don't know, just throwing it out there. The public can't see it.
Do we have enough direction, you think? I mean, I'm hearing that nobody really wants.
We've got a non-compliance right now.
Right.
So we're, we're needing to have some guidance as to whether there's going to be interest in trying to change the code, and if so.
Well, even if we do, until it's.
Right now, you're a non-compliant.
Until it's changed, it's in non-compliance, and it really needs to be removed, is, is I guess what I'm hearing. And then if we decide we want to allow something, and we don't know if we do, and what that might look like, at that point, you could potentially put something back up, maybe on a temporary basis.
But it sounds to me like they can apply for a temporary permit, right?
I'd have to look at that.
I mean, because we think we have.
There's temporary uses, there's specific uses.
Specific on what can be the use?
Right.
Okay. So right now, they wouldn't qualify for the kind, the way the temporary one is written?
No, because they're specifically not allowed right now.
Okay. But if we are acting on reviewing, I mean, just, it should be just like if we were looking to review and cha- make change to the, to that zoning class, there would be a time in which you wouldn't say, okay, you have to take it down until we make a change in zoning class.
Right.
So if we say we're looking at the temporary use permit, then that would allow that to, not have to be taken down immediately while we review that document, correct?
That, that I would appreciate, with the Mother Nature deciding to come two, two months early.
I would suggest that that's a, kind of a slippery slope, because we could have any non-compliance brought to your attention. An applicant could request to have any code changed, or a person in non-compliance, I'm not talking just about this particular situation, I'm talking about any, any non-compliance. We find it in the community, somebody can say, well, let's investigate whether this code changes while, and leave my non-compliance in place until it's remedied.
Well, that's what we were being asked to, to do.
I, I understand. I think I understood the mayor's point is, you're a non-compliant until you, until the code's changed.
Yeah, and.
How long do we allow that to?
I mean, ideally, somebody would come in and try to apply for something before they put it up, and at that point, we can make a decision before it's already installed. And in this case, the structure's already up, and we're asking for permission after the fact, and that's what makes it difficult for me and for us to enforce, because we don't want to take a hard-line approach, but we also have been asked, you know, especially by city council, to enforce our codes and our ordinances. So it puts us in a difficult spot.
Well, yeah, this is a learning process for me as a commission member, because I want to understand what, so if, if we're essentially evaluating whether to give permission for you guys to have that structure taken down, whether we're looking, I mean, that's a different, I mean, it's.
We can pursue that irrespective of the commission's directive now.
Right.
But we also are trying to understand whether there's momentum one way or the other, that would, would lead us to how we'd enforce it currently.
And, and, so I guess I'll just reemphasize the fact that I do not want to change the code. I, I don't see a reason to change the code.
All right.
I could make a motion to make this easier for you. I, I'd like to motion that.
I don't know if we have it properly noticed to make a motion.
Can or not?
All right. But I certainly understand the direction that we're getting. I mean, you can reiterate that if you'd like.
I'm going to reiterate that, that the code is fine the way it is, and that we may not change it.
Okay. All right. All right. So I don't know if there's anything else to discuss on this one tonight, then. We'll certainly talk tomorrow and see if we can come up with an example of something that this group might consider. But until then, I think we might have to make some arrangements and take it down. So hopefully the weather will cooperate.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in.
Okay.
Item number 11 is the Housing Affordability and New Housing Fee Recording, Reporting Requirements. And this is one of my, another one of my favorite, what I call an unfunded mandate, that we're required to do. My understanding is, is we're required to do this now on an annual basis. And Rodney can kind of walk us through this without getting into the whole... It's a fairly big document. Some of it you might recognize from the comp plan, but this is a requirement from, I believe, the state, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a new state law that was put in place for certain reporting requirements. And this is our, this is our attempt to address that statutory change. These two different documents, which will be posted on our, on our website. If we don't actually have one in place, we subject ourselves to not being able to impose certain fees on, on certain projects. So we've certainly done our part at a staff level to, I think, address the statutory reporting requirements. As the mayor indicated, there's a fair amount of material that's extracted from our comprehensive plan and other documents to supplement or provide as appendices to these, to these, to the report itself. It's our understanding in working with some of the, I'll call them, authors of the law, as it, as it changed and it morphed into what currently is in place. The Builders Association was interested in being able to understand ways to potentially reduce costs to develop, essentially, in communities. I think the version that came out might not have obtained everything that the Builders Association wanted. But likewise, I don't think it really gives them information that's as relevant. If you recognize just one of the calculations, it has to be made. Essentially, we document all the fees that we took in in the previous year, divided by the number of residential units that were constructed. Not even limiting the fee discussion to just the residential construction. It's all of our fees that we collect related to the wide menu of fees that we collect. So I think at one point, they might have had interest in saying, okay, in Stoughton, it costs X number of thousand dollars per unit for permit fees versus another community. But with the resulting language of the legislation, I don't think it's a number that's easily compared to another community. And so a number of communities, we met and talked about in the documentation, and tried to interpret and understand it. And we think that we've, we've drafted documents that we feel comfortable address the reporting requirements. We think that there might be some changes to the legislation going forward to clarify some points. And we may even learn of reasons for us to change or modify the report next year. But in an effort to have it in place and on file prior to the first of the year, we're asking the Plan and Commission's acceptance of these documents and a recommendation to the council to do the same.
Open that up for any questions, comments, opinions? Whatever you'd prefer. We have a few of our own, but I think we've kind of covered it. Go ahead.
Just, just a couple of things. And I'll be honest, that I did not read this word for word, cover for cover. Particularly the appendices. But a couple of things that I think might help. One, in the table of contents for the Housing Affordability Report, I think it'd be very helpful to have the appendices actually titled and labeled. So as you look at the table of contents, you'll know what those appendices are. Makes it a lot easier to review the document as someone who's just looking at it. Was also confused to me why, in reading through the statute, it almost seemed like the permit schedule was actually supposed to be also included within the Housing Affordability Report. And so I didn't know, I mean, I know they're also, they're listed almost as two separate documents.
Yeah.
But it almost seems like this could be another appendices within the Housing Affordability Report. Because I just know that they list, they say, under, which one was it? On one of the line items under the Housing Affordability Report, it talked about the fees and the permit costs associated with it. And so it sounded to me like it almost, that it wouldn't hurt just to cover your bases, to have this be an appendices as well.
Thank you for the comments. We'll vote for it.
Anybody else have any comments or suggestions? So I think what we're looking for is some sort of a recommendation to accept the document with the changes that were recommended. Is that what we're looking for?
Sure.
And we have until, what, the first of the year to actually do this?
Yeah, our hope would be to take it to council at their next meeting. So the next, yeah, would be the next council meeting.
Okay.
I did find where it's item, or it's paragraph E.
E, yeah.
It says it should list the, the fees and land dedication requirements, the permit procedures, and all those kinds of things. So to me, that's part of the permit process, those fees. Other than that, I think it looks good. So I guess I would move that the City of Stoughton approve these as the official documents to cover those statute requirements.
As amended?
As amended.
Sir's second by Mieske? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That carries. Future agenda items? Do we have any?
We'll have the preliminary plat, action item for the Kettle Park West at the next Plan Commission meeting. That will certainly be on the next meeting. And upcoming meetings, we'll also have rezoning requests related to that area as well. The CSM, or the adjacent CSM will be part of that coming forward as well.
Looks like it's gonna be a busy winter. Anybody else have any future agenda items, something they'd like to see us explore? Come up with something, just let us know. All right, looking for a final motion.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
All right, sir's second?
Second now.
Secondly, Schumacher. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Thank you.